Seven o'clock.
As we're live.
Okay, this time is seven o'clock on August first, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. And first we'll have the pledge allegiance to the flag as a flag here. I pledge allegiance to the flag. States of America and do three public which is stand one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice so. Honored tonight to have Pastor Joe Stafford from Wesley Chapel Church here to for the invocation Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor to be with you this evening. Let us pray. Father, what a joy it is to be able to serve with people who care about our community, care about getting things accomplished for those around our neighborhoods. And I ask, Lord, that you would bless them this evening as they meet. We are aware that you have told us that if we lack wisdom, we should ask of God who will give it liberally. And so I pray, Lord, that they would seek you for wisdom. And we recognize that collectively, we are always smarter than individually. So thank you, Lord, for these who give of their time, their talents, their energy. And I pray that you would bless them as as they conduct the business of our good city tonight. We pray in your precious and holy name, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. We'll have roll call council members.
Mr. Baldinger.
Here.
Mr. Watkins.
Here.
Ms. Earleston.
Here.
Dr. Felner. Mr. Ivy.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Triplett.
Here.
You know, six of the seven council members are present at this time. I'd like to have a motion to excuse Dr. Felner for the evening as he's out of town.
I'll make the motion Tammy Earleston to excuse Dr.
Ms. Earleston made the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Triplett. All in favor say aye.
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 Those likewise, Dr. Felner hereby excused for the tonight's meeting. Next, we'll have roll call elected officials and safety.
Mayor Larry.
Here.
Auditor Trish.
Here.
Director Vlal Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks. I think that's him. Safety Service Director Ward.
Here.
Okay, we've all had a chance to read the July twenty eighth council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
I like the motion to approve the minutes of the July twenty eighth twenty twenty regular meeting.
Hey, Mr. Baldinger made the motion seconded by.
Ivy.
Mr. Ivy. Any corrections or additions? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, minutes of the July twentieth meeting hereby approved. We only have one item on the agenda tonight. It went through committee. So do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as published?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Baldinger made the motion.
I'd get.
Mr. Watkins seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda hereby approved as published. Legislation with ordinance twenty twenty day fifty four is the first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash fifty four entitled ordinance amending section eleven ninety three point oh six C of the codified ordinance of the city of Guyan related to street alignments.
Okay, you heard the reading ordinance discussion.
Mr. President, members, this came through Law and Order Committee. It, if you notice essentially it is a updating of this ordinance. This was originally brought to the committee and reference to the section C, item seven on the first part of this ordinance, which reference a maximum or a cul-de-sac here in our community. We have since discovered obviously that in that we actually have some that are longer than this that are have already been built that are being used by our citizens. So after discussion, it was agreed that the best thing would be to just eliminate this maximum length which is mean we're taking the whole section C seven out of the original ordinance. And pretty much it unless any of the members would like to add or Mr. Palmer.
No, you've got it right there, Mike.
Mayor, any comment on that? Must be muted.
Yeah.
Any else have any comments on?
But he broke up a little bit when he was talking. For for me, what's it was he saying that it's just there was a maximum length for a cul-de-sac? And it wasn't really being followed. And so we're just kind of eliminated. Is that the gist of it? Did I understand correctly?
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay, that's what I thought, but it broke up a little bit. So I just wanted to make sure.
Mayor, are you unmuted now?
None.
Yeah, you have any comments on?
I really don't. I think a first reading on this will work. It's where there's a there's a things are technically out of compliance now in that their existing cul-de-sacs of links more than the the ordinance allows. I think to allow that go a couple of weeks. One thing I that I don't believe we've heard from and might be one of the considerations about the length of a cul-de-sac has to do with fire protection. And 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 you know, not being able to reach a house that was back the a long cul-de-sac. The other issue that I'm more familiar with in firefighting response, and that's snow plowing. The the that's that might be the reason that there's originally a cul-de-sac length. But we don't have any objection to it. I'd like to hear from some of the people who perhaps live along the cul-de-sac. Let it ride a couple more weeks.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, you heard the mayor request that we take it to the second reading. Everybody agree?
Yeah, there's there's no rush on this as far as I know.
There's not an emergency clause either, so it'll wait thirty days after it's approved as well.
Okay, if there's nothing else, move on to other business. Committee meetings, who wants to start?
Uh, Mr. President.
Mr. Triplett.
We discussed the PCA in our August utilities meeting and according to everybody, the PCA is going to stay at zero for at least till February again.
Thank you. Anybody else on committees?
Yeah. Finance committee. If I'm not mistaken, Julie, I think this month is one of the months we move up to the nineteenth to stay between the council meetings. Am I correct?
Yeah, that's it's normal. Yeah, the third. Yeah, the third. It's not moved down to the fourth. Yes, the third one. The third Wednesday.
It's going to be on August the nineteenth at seven P M via Zoom.
And our police, fire and health. That will be on the twentieth via Zoom and since Dr. owner is not here, the economic development meeting will be on the eighteenth via Zoom as well. Is that? Do I have that right, Julie?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Parks and Recreation, I believe tomorrow night, seven o'clock via Zoom.
Okay, Mr. Watkins.
Yes, we have a meeting on Thursday for Streets and Alley Bridges Trees at seven via Zoom.
Okay. And the other two committees met this month already. Correct? Okay, any any other business be brought up? By the council?
Well, I had a meeting. This Ken Watkins, I met with Mr. Frank House this week and he enlightened me a little bit about what's going on out for the rec centers that they're proposing. So I feel a little better about it, but there's a little more I need to know, but but it went real well.
Okay, good. Thanks for relaying it back to us. Anybody?
Carl.
Yes.
I think Mark mentioned a meeting or two ago that we probably at some point need to have a meeting of committee of the whole meeting on this though. So we can all get together and have a discussion on this. So I don't know, at some point we may want to consider consider doing that.
Okay, you think the time is right to set that a meeting tonight?
Oh, no. Good or not, I mean, that the American.
Mayor.
I don't think we're I, you know, the the my recommendation would would be say two or maybe three fold. One, the there, I don't believe that there's any reason to abandon the committee process. The previous discussions have been in the Economic Development Committee. I think they should stay there until as Ken said, he's he, you know, he understands it better, maybe feels better about, but there are outstanding questions. And I think those are best resolved and clarified at the committee first. And then perhaps Gail's idea soon after there is a consensus around cost that that's the second thing I wanted to mention. We've really got to nail down these costs and make sure that all of that adds up. And then the third item has to do with an urgency. I want to get this accomplished if we can afford to. But we've been working on it for a while and there's a there seems to be an urgency that has been attached to doing this right away. I'm not sure that's a good idea. And finally, I kind of wish that individual board members from the port would resist the temptation to meet individually with council. I think we're probably all benefit from meeting as a group. And in the committee process, so I mean, you ladies and gentlemen, you know, you make decisions about who you're going to meet with certainly. But this is an individual board member, not speaking on behalf of who I'm not quite sure, but I think I mean, I absolutely have to mention that and you know. So I use the committee process. I'd want to clarify costs. Because I think there was a long meeting this morning, the costs of this and some updating in costs. And then I would, I really think it's important that we speak board to board if there's going to be communication between the Port Authority and City Council, and that's best done, I think, by the committees that Carl designated beginning of the term. So long answer, Carl, but you you asked what I thought.
Do you want to leave it then to leave it up to the mayor to get with us when he feels all some of these questions are answered?
No, I have a question, sir. What I'm saying is the we should hear Mark, I'm sorry, talk to it be or whoever I did, I apologize. What I'm saying is we don't even have a proposal, do we?
No.
Okay, size, cost elements and and before there's a any sort of rush to set a date and get this thing bid out, I think there has to be a better understanding among council on on those issues. So I really what I hope is next is representatives of the Port Authority come to an upcoming, I don't know when that's their schedule to determine upcoming Economic Development Committee with a proposal that says it's this big, it's this much, this is how we propose to pay for it. And I think talking to individual council members does not, you can tell it doesn't ingratiate the mayor to the this approach, and I think it doesn't ultimately get us to where those including me want to go with this project. I'm not going to get sort of skeped into being opposed to something that that I've nurtured along for a long time. So thanks for listening.
Mr. President, I have a question, please. Um, it's for the mayor. Do we, what what do you feel a general idea is is when we could you know, come to a resolution on the three points? I mean, as far as a timeframe, are you looking at a month, ninety days, another year? What are your thoughts?
Well, I'm not going to, I'll tell you this much. I think I'm ready when there's a proposal from the Port Authority that involves size, shape, haha, cost and timeframe. Now, I'm ready like tomorrow. You want to do it tomorrow, but I'm not sure, you know, and so the this idea, Mr. Ivy, that somehow I'd be slowing it down. I'm just saying let's make sure that what is being talked about can be afforded. And I think your committee or member of that committee, Dr. Fellner's committee, Tammy's on that committee. I mean, I'd be ready and I'd be excited about getting a proposal.
Oh, no, please, Mayor, I'm not insinuating that you want to slow anything down. I'm simply asking what are realistic expectations, but you answered that, so perfect.
They could make a proposal, I think, in a week and a half's maybe a little fast, but maybe they'd like to. But I think the first step, a different way of answering your question to moving this along is to hearing a proposal from the Port Authority.
But I mean, that's great. Thank you.
Agency, this is what we need City Council to do. And that's so I think that's, I hope that answers your question. And as soon as they're ready, I think I'm in the camp that would say, yeah, that's great to hear proposal. Because we've been thinking about it, talking about it for a while. And so.
No, I appreciate clarification. It's I that was the only question I had. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Americans, in this?
I do have one, Ken Watkins. And I'd like Mr. Palmer involved on this. I would like to know, is there such a thing as we can meet like an executive session without being via Zoom? Have this talk about this whole subject together as a group? And have that all the costs and so forth read to us and so we understand it a little better and then go public with it? So the people know what we're trying to do? Is that a good deal or not?
No. Well, Mr. Watkins, you are able to go into executive session and talk outside of public ears and eyes. But it has to be for a set reason that's covered in the Ohio Vice Code and merely talking about this unless it meets one of those requirements is not going to be an option for you.
Okay.
So, you know, I think Mr. Baldinger's idea was to meet all together in a committee. People sort of like what you're saying. But it sounds to me like the mayor is suggesting that that would be done after the committee process. So I guess the bottom line, Mr. Watkins, is I don't think so.
Hey, well, I was just curious that we could do that and then go public with it the next meeting. That's the only reason I was asking that.
Yeah, public is kind of entitled to hear your discussion.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you.
There's eight reasons, there's eight reasons you're going to executive session. This is not one of them. So as Mr. Palmer said.
Yeah, Carl.
Yes.
I agree with the mayor a hundred percent on this. I don't didn't want to take it from the 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 committee. I just wanted, I just want all all council to sit down and have a discussion about this.
Right.
Point in the future and not knowing what that date would be, but I agree with him a hundred percent, not taking it out of the Economic Development Committee, just let them do their thing and when that's all put together, then I think council needs to come together and everybody ask their questions before we go into full council with it.
Thanks, Gail.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I agree. I agree completely as well to get it through the Economic Development Committee. And you know, I think there's just by having this discussion, there's been a lot of clarifications, not only with us as council, but you know, members of the port that may be on this call. So, you know, if we can get it out of committee, get it to full council, I would just suggest bring pillows and sleeping bags because it'll probably be a long session that evening, but.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we'll move on to auditors, Trish.
I have nothing for this night tonight.
Okay, Treasurer Sparks not with us, is he tonight, Julie?
I don't think so. I'm not. I'm not sure who that phone number is, but it I don't think it's Rod, so.
Phone number has been here before, but I don't know who it is.
I know Rod has come in that way before, but that person's not answered me, so.
Okay, Auditor Roger Palmer.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Really? Okay, Mayor, it's up to you.
Hey, thanks a lot, Carl. The we fielded a lot of questions. There was one point the this morning, mid morning, when both of both Natasha and Matt were answering phone calls relating to the paving job. So if you called, you probably were in line almost, if you will. Let's start with an overview and then talk about some of the good points or bad points. The overview is we're all aware that we're participating in urban paving contract to do all of Harding Way. And in the design of that, the engineering, getting ready to go to the contractor. There were changes to a certain number of the curb ramps, the handicap ramps. The plans were let, they were awarded and right before construction was to begin Thursday of last week. There was field work done that identified a number of other crosses somewhere in the neighborhood of two dozen curb ramps that have adjustments that need to be made. You know, I think everybody said, well, that's kind of late in the game. There's a I'm full of cliches today, so I apologize. It kind of is what it is. We've signed a contract that in this urban paving program that ODOT has, in order to get the million dollar grant, we have to agree to make all improvements or excuse me, pay the cost of all the improvements and they give a list of non-pavement items. So we've agreed to make these improvements. What is a surprise is that the standards that are being used now aren't the same that were applied when it was designed. So if you if I don't want to spend a lot of time on the blame game, but ODOT designed it. But we agreed to pay any changes that result from design error. So I think we got that information on Friday. I think anyone who's been through town has seen if everyone, if almost, but just about every crosswalk has some changes to it. And that's going to result in what I thought was going to be a much larger change order request that will be expected to pay. I thought it was going to run into the a hundred and something thousand. This is the maybe if there is good news, the story, the the cost of the extra work and the rework that needs to be done is about eighty thousand dollars. So Brian and I haven't had a chance to sit down and talk about how we fund that extra piece of work. I think by Thursday, Ken, we'll have a better idea of how much that squeezes the the paving program that we talked about last meeting. Ed, I, you know, Edwards Grant or Grand, there's a handful I can remember off the top of my head. Our goal is to figure out a way to go ahead and pay that extra Harding Way cost without taking all of it out of the proposed regular paving budget. So that's an overview, the you know, if I'm a little grouchy on the Spree Center, we had a long meeting this morning and that came after a a long weekend of trying to figure out how we were going to fund and exactly what the impact was going to be on the Harding Way project. So anyways, I'm not sure. Questions from that? Sorry, Ken.
Oh, no. Just thank you for clarifying that. That's nice to know.
I wish there was a way out. You're welcome. I wish there was a way out, but I I think you know, the it the without being too, I we really need to get this built. We have a lot bigger project beginning about this time next year and going into twenty two with the widen in the Portland way. And we don't want to earn a gold star for being a difficult community to work with. So a lot of the changes you won't be able to see. There are the differences in the percent of grade or the elevation of the handicap ramps. They're changing them so that those standalone pedestals that you press the wheelchair ones, there's a number of those so that the person in a wheelchair would be less likely to roll out while they were reaching you know, to ask for the light to change. So I it's last thing I'll say, it's a matter of perspective. If your mobility challenge, if you're in a wheelchair, then eighty thousand probably doesn't seem like much to make it more walkable. If you're grumpy and have all the agility and all the energy and you're and you think it's a fair amount of money for almost imperceptible changes, but I think on balance, it won't slow down the project. It'll cost the city in the neighborhood of eighty thousand more.
How do these changes come about in the middle of contract? I mean, how do they change the the game?
Well, I I think, Carl, the best answer is that when the ODOT part of ODOT that got the construction project looked at the plans, they asked the contractor to verify those locations and that's how it was identified. So you know, the and the subcontractor that's doing the curbs, the paving part, excuse me, the the curbs and these ramps. Those guys, you know, went out and measured it and sure enough, it doesn't meet current standards.
Yeah.
So, you know, and oh, you know, the only thing that's irksome is if we would have known that three or four weeks later, we would have developed the paving list expecting, you know, maybe a little less money to work with. So it's just going to be perhaps with Brian looking at some other sources rather than just going right into the right into the street fund because that's pretty tight. But the the of all the income, all the revenue shortfalls, it's the toughest for us this year. I won't think in the next year, but it's shortfall on gas tax. So that fund that we use to pay those employees and do street paving and repair, it's it's feeling the squeeze already. So I don't want to hit that anymore. So one of the thoughts Brian might be looking at the capital improvements fund. We're going to end up spending all of that by the time we get the money from the Commerce Center at the rate we're going. But I think that's an alternative that that, you know, begin to talk about and have council consider probably by the next finance committee. Probably by the next finance committee. How we're gonna, excuse me, how we're going to come up with the 80 grand that we're going to likely need to to send to ODOT.
Any comments or questions from any of the council members to the mayor on this item? Not anything else, Mayor?
You know, the there are. I made some comments last night. The housing is. I think we're beginning to see a couple of things fall in place that will help. The just the overall growth of of Galleon and not necessarily jobs related, but. We've heard the first rumblings about it and assisted living. Basically, on the corner of Portland Way and Hosford. I know what we found from the assisted living that's in town. It's kind of the Aspen Terrace, although it's that's not assisted living. I understand that, but. What it does for the housing market is allow oftentimes existing Galleon residents. To move out of their house, freeing up oftentimes a nice house, you know, not always, but oftentimes a nice house. That then allows another family, a new family to town to move in. So we've got. I think those two pieces, maybe the availability of some more existing housing as a result of building. And I wish I could remember off the top of my head and and I don't think Eric's on here tonight, but he knows the number. Of assisted living units that's in that proposal. So that'll that'll be going to planning commission pretty soon. There's a variance hearing with BZA on Thursday to talk about. Some moving the garages or or approaching a little more on the. Utility easement on the apartments. What's not. Announced, but is likely to happen. Just a matter of timing is. The apartment owners are going to ask to go ahead and proceed with the rest of those units. So I think all three of the of the other proposed units up to 96. So I believe that's really great news on the housing side. And I just happen to know we. You know, sometimes you do a lot to make a project happen. Sometimes just give somebody a phone number and tell them good luck. This is somewhere closer to that, but. A. A builder developer has been working with owners of the Renshaw property. And we'll see how that goes. They've got due diligence to do on the property and make sure it's suitable for what they want to do with it, but. You know, it's another part of the housing equation and then the. In some people's mind, perhaps the long shot, but something I'm convinced will work and determined to make happen. And that's the redevelopment of Eagle Crusher and that property down there. When you go down on market, if you have any reason to be there on Pershing or on what many people call the Wood Streets back there, those are nice little neighborhoods. And I'm of the opinion that if the city who now owns it redevelops it, we can make lots available. For housing that. You know, that will meet a certain part of that demand for the housing. So, you know, we can't. We're not the builders. The city's not the builders and we're not the financiers, but it I think. There are more things we can do to expedite, set the table, if you will, and I think at least in four different bases, that's moving ahead. So. That's something else that doesn't, you know. It's good to update you on and there's some immediate results, even though it's sort of a long term. Plan or strategy for Galleon, that being redeveloping housing. Anyways, that's what I got, Carl. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? I don't think I have anything. If if not, Mr. Treblet?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
By Mr. Treblet, second by who was it? Mr. Atkins. It's 7:34. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, meeting here by adjourned at 7:34. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night, every good night, all.